Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, February 22, 2017. The time now is 7:01. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to go right to item B on our agenda, public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Our phone number, 860-665-8736. Wait just a second. Okay. Seeing nobody in the public coming forward and nobody calling in on the phone, we're going to move right into our agenda item. Agenda item C, new business, where we're going to have a discussion on adjustments and possible transmittal of the 2017-2018 Board of Education budget to the town manager. We thought we would start by going through a couple of the things that were in the white folder. So these were follow-up items from our last meeting. And Lou, I know you went back at it and did a nice flow chart from us. So I don't know in which order you want to start, but if we could talk about the athletic revenues, your flow chart, and then we can talk a little bit about the CIP meeting last night and what we may want to do going forward. Okay?
It was actually Pam.
Oh, Pam! Okay. Do you want to start? Okay, do we want to start with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Flow chart for the $515,000 bill has taken a number of iterations over the last few weeks to try to make it an effective document that you can have talking points from. And being the analytical, left-brain kind of guy that I am, I had to rely on Pam to help me out and put this into a more graphical and easier to kind of get your arms around.
Fourth grade level.
I didn't say that.
For us. We know. We see the pictures.
Okay. Right. So in the last version I had given you that was just Excel spreadsheet-based, you know, I had the groupings of basically one column for each year, you know, the last year's activity, which was the declaration of the surplus, and that was the only event that happened last year. We have this year, which nothing has happened yet, but we have two pending possibilities. One is the utilization of a part of the surplus that's been carried forward, as well as the possibility of declaring a new surplus, because we've got the health benefits money available to us in this budget. We may, depending on how things work out, we may choose to try to supplement the $515 with funds that are available through the health benefits and roll forward, you know, a minimum of $515 we currently have or possibly go higher. So those are still in a state of flux because we don't have decisions yet. So as we went through the kind of the sequential way this plays out, you can see that the left-hand column in 2015 starts with the surplus declaration. And at that time, that motion took the $515,000 out of our planned operations account, which is where we had the bulk of the surplus at that point in time. Instead of spreading it across many programs, it was really a matter of just taking care of it immediately as part of the budget reconciliation process with town to get them to adopt at the .49 number for us. And that was the only transaction which occurred last fiscal year. Okay. In the budget development process for '16-'17, the other component, which was just a budgetary transaction, was not a real financial transaction, because no money changed hands at that point, was we had to recognize a $515,000 reduction in the overall board budget. Okay? That was originally done for expediency's sake, to take the entire $515,000 out of the health benefits account. And then in December, the board took other action, putting the money back in benefits and taking a $103,000 cut across each of the five big programs in the salary area to reflect what it truly was at that point. In retrospect, we probably could have done that last April, but being a brand-new circumstance, really didn't know where everything was going. So that really just corrected it to the starting status it should have. Okay? And that was done at the January 25 meeting. And that was really to set up Dr. Collins' budget presentation so many of the categories lined up properly with what was being presented going forward for '17-'18. Okay? So the net impact was really a zero. You know, since no dollars have changed hands, no one has reached into the piggy bank and taken any money out at this time. You know, the $515,000 is still sitting there. Okay? We are sitting at the cost of decision-making over the next six to eight weeks of, you know, the necessity to draw down or the necessity or the preference of, you know, setting aside money and rolling forward into next year. And those decisions the board will make collectively based on, you know, the dynamics of how the entire budget process works out. Yeah.
Can you just elaborate? I don't see it here on how we got to the 225.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. The assessment we did a couple of weeks ago was showing that we would need to have a drawdown of approximately $225,000 out of the health benefits account, excuse me, out of the non-lapsing account this year, because we have made up some of the ground of the $515,000, but we haven't made it all up.
Can you explain, just for people to understand, what you mean by that about the...
Right. When your budget was adopted in April, that was the snapshot starting point.
Right.
And from when that happened in April, we've had over 40 staffing changes which have occurred. And I have to say that were mostly on the beneficial side. We had a few additional retirements. We had breakage from people resigning with being able to hire replacements at lower price levels, as well as several LTS slots that we were able to... We would use LTS and slots we typically had a contract in in the past. And those have broken our way.
Long-term sub.
Long-term substitute. You know, one was for all year, one was for half-year. And having these favorable breaks aggregated to a net $225,000 to the good.
Got it.
So we're technically $290,000 short of breaking even on that $515 of our own accord. And we either go to the non-lapsing account, or we go to utilizing health benefits money to make up that shortfall for ourselves. And that decision was made over the next few weeks on that. Okay? So this was written with using the anticipated outcome of we're going to draw down $225,000 from the non-lapsing fund, which will leave you $290,000 in the account effective July 1st for utilization in a future fiscal year. Okay? And obviously, that can all change based on the motions and actions that the board takes over the next six to eight weeks.
Got it. Questions for Lou? Josh?
And I will just say, I said it at a previous meeting, but now that we're looking at it, it's easier to think about if, at last year's budget time, we knew all of those 40 things were going to happen, instead of saying we needed $515,000...
We would have said to...
...we would have said we need $225,000, which is what people don't always understand in the public, that you never know what's going to occur, if it's going to be positive, negative. We've gotten positive results from it, so we would have needed less money had we known what we know. But to be responsible budgeters, you have to budget for the amount if nothing changes. I will also say, Lou, I gave you an incomplete at our last meeting, and this was the kind of chart that I was looking for, so I'm going to give you an A on my end. And I think you've met all the standards, which is probably what we should really stand at of a grade, right?
Thank you.
So thank you. I think this is much more, and this is something that I expect would be on our website soon so that people can take a look and look back a year from now and understand what's happened and where it's been.
I would make one suggestion, if it's possible to add one more bullet in the middle and to give examples of how we arrived at the 225. I wrote down all your notes about, even if you wanted to say in general, staffing changes or just something that, I just feel like that's still the missing piece.
Some things we caused too. So I want to make, you know, like we, not hiring or delaying the hiring of a maintenance person or, you know what I mean? So some of those things we caused to happen. In retrospect, we should have fired the maintenance person, you know what I mean? But some of those things, if you have an opening, you can do that by delaying it. Obviously, you can't delay a classroom teacher. But if there is a position that you can delay to cause some of this breakage, you can do that. So that's where some of it came from as well.
Pam, can I call on you to make that change?
Thank you. Okay. Who's going to take the athletic revenue? I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but we could quickly go over that.
Want me to? Okay. Okay. What you see is a synopsis of the last fiscal year's activity for the overall athletic fund. And it is starting balance $83,000 of cash that was in the account, and we generated $161,000 of revenues for the fund. If I remember correctly, the participation fees were around $70,000 of that amount. And then you have gate receipts for ticket sales, other tournament events that you're getting revenue for that occurred during the year. And the total expenses were 100, just under $123,000 for last year.
Is that refereeing, or what was that again?
It's refereeing, the day workers for games and events.
Okay, right, right. Safety.
There are expenses for the programs, like we may have 50 uniforms for a team and we have 60 people or 60 participants, so we need 10 more uniforms. They may not be the right sizes or they may be damaged. You know, there's all these uncertainties that we work around, and the athletic fund is there to pick up those things each and every year. And the amounts vary based on what the needs are. You know, some years are more, you know, there have been years where the expenses are more than revenues. This year was one, or it was the other way around. But the target is we try to maintain around $100,000 balance in the account year to year.
Thank you. This was good to see. Any questions? Mr. Schulman?
I will just say, it makes me feel a little bit better about the level of funding in our operating budget, that there is money that they can, that comes in and that they can use, and that it seems that it's an appropriate level of participation fee, that it's covering what they need. And I'm sure if they needed to spend a little more, that you have a little bit more cushion than normal, so I'm sure Chris can do something with that. Also say that based on it being around $70,000, that's almost 1,000 sports participants, which in a high school of, what do we have now, like 1,300 or so kids? So 1,000 sports played by 1,300 kids over three seasons, that's a huge level of involvement. So I think we should keep that in consideration.
Participation levels have been awesome.
That's amazing.
Okay. I think that's all I have for follow-ups. Correct me if I'm wrong, is there something else? No, I think that was it.
There was the non-certified summary that was in here.
Yeah, that was, remember the big jump in the, in the non-certified? There was a jump, and we were questioning the $44,000 and why...
Yep, yep, got it. Thank you.
So I think all of that occurred, Lou was out of the room, if you remember correctly, when the question was asked, and then he came in, and I think he was answering a different question.
Okay.
So here's the reality of, it was just put in the wrong place. So it was supposed to be in 111, and it was in 112. So Karen just made an adjustment, because none of us could explain it either, like what happened. And Karen said, "Oh, God, it was in the wrong place, so that should have been 111 at 112."
Okay.
So that's honestly, that's all that was. So this is a simple adjustment. Bottom line is still the same. But it's not that huge jump in one, because we couldn't figure out why the big jump in 112. And it wasn't supposed to be there, that's why.
Okay. So these are just pages for your budget?
Now, we will have attached our replacement budget pages.
Correct, yes.
To just, you know, certainly you can keep your old page, and if you did compare these to last year, you'll see the consistency is perfectly matches.
We went around and around and around on this, and we finally figured out we were talking about two different things.
Okay. Oh, Josh.
So is this not related to permanent building subs?
Right, correct.
At all?
At all.
Okay. So that discussion about the other salaries account?
He was talking about something completely different. That's right.
Yep.
Got it. Oh, I was confused that night.
We all were. We all kind of, we finally got to it.
Okay. Okay. Let's, before we, let's see. I think now, Josh, if you wouldn't mind, last night, Josh and I participated on the CIP committee, where we made some decisions. The CIP committee made some recommendations to the town council, because ultimately, it's up to the town council to decide about, you know, the funding for the CIP. But I'm going to have Josh give you an update and kind of where we landed, especially because, you know, I know everybody around this table was concerned about the buses and the maintenance and some of those things. So we'll let Josh give you the update, and we'll answer any questions that you have regarding how our meeting went last night. And then I think we're going to make a couple, we might need to, based on what everybody decides, make a couple adjustments to our budget before we do the transmittal, so.
Okay. So as I think everyone around this table at least knows, our CIP budget in the town is funded at approximately a level of $6.3 million a year in the town budget. Part of that's debt service and part of it is pay-as-you-go projects. The debt service for this upcoming year is $1.15 million total, which is incredibly low. I think there's only one project left, which is the police department that's still being bonded in long-term debt payments. So that's the, that's $1.15 million. So the target for the CIP committee is to come up with $5.15 million worth of pay-as-you-go projects, so projects that are immediately paid off. In the past, we've been funded for things like the STEM academies at the middle school, STEM academy at the high school, all that's pay-as-you-go money, so we've been given that money through the committee and done it. So our requests this year into that committee were, every year we get $125,000, which goes into the public school CIP account. We requested $1 million for the second phase out of three of the John Wallace Wing reconfiguration security updates. We requested $644,000 and change for our bus replacement program. That's the first time we've requested it at that high of a level. We requested $188,000 for technology, which is for our Chromebook program, to keep them coming in at the younger levels. We've been funded that for a couple of years. And then we requested $150,000 for district-wide HVAC replacement, $150,000 for district-wide roof replacement, and $75,000 for district sidewalks, paving, and there's a third one on that, but I can't remember it. Sidewalks, paving.
Curving.
Curving, you know, stuff like that. I think I caught everything, right? Yep, great. So of all those items, so there's a whole bunch of town items that we go through, and there was about $8 million worth of requests, something like that, and we have to get down to $5.15 plus some other grant money that comes in. So it's a little bit, it's about $6 million total spending. The committee last night determined that we would get the 125 that's mandated by charter, $570,000 or so for the buses, the $1 million for the John Wallace project, and that was, and the 188 for our computer technology program. And that was it. So what we didn't get was our three maintenance line items, the 150 for HVAC, 150 for roof replacement reserve funds, and 75 for the sidewalks and paving. So as some of us remember, a few years ago was the first time we moved those items, the technology and buses, into CIP requests. And that was part of a budget negotiation to try to get a higher number for our operating budget. We moved some of our stuff out of our operating budget into CIP. So for a few years, we've been talking about how there's a donut hole if we're never, if we aren't funded at those actual levels. And this is the first year coming out of committee that we're not funded in the maintenance at least. So right now, we don't have funding for those $375,000 in maintenance in CIP. We also don't have that money in our maintenance budget. Because a few years ago, when we first moved 300 grand in general school improvements into CIP, we cut out 3-year 350 from our actual operating budget. We've never put it back, because for three years, we've been funded at that level that we've requested in CIP. So we talked at length at the committee, there was no, there was, you know, some talk about moving money out of other areas in CIP. At the end of the day, the CIP committee is advisory, it has no final authority. The town council can do whatever they like at the end of the day when they set their own budget. For four years now, that's been part of the negotiation over the board budget. So one of the things that we talked about last night was that if they don't move forward in the CIP committee, I at least, and I think Nancy feels the same way, will be compelled to support putting it back into our operating budget. Because one way or another, either in the CIP money or operating budget money, we need the money for maintenance work.
This is the hole we've been talking about over and over and over.
This is that donut hole that we've been talking about that's dangerous if we don't get funded. Whether or not we get funded in the operating budget, or they want to cut our operating budget, and we can try to negotiate it going back into CIP and then moving things around is discussion for another day. But if it's not in CIP and it's also not in our operating budget, then it's nowhere.
Emily.
Okay. So you guys made those recommendations, but do we know what, I mean, you said that we were getting the three items.
The CIP committee made the recommendations for all of the things that Josh said, the 188 for technology, the buses, et cetera. What they did not recommend funding at this point...
Right.
...is the maintenance.
So that means that that's what's recommended, but we still don't know what they're going to do.
That's the list that goes to the town council, but they can do whatever they want.
They could cut our buses, they could add the money back in, they could, they could move anything around that they...
They can, they can cut things out and not reallocate the money and fund it at a lower level than 6.3. That's, it's a number that's been in place for a long time. They sometimes hit 6.3, sometimes a little under. They can move things around, that's what they've done in years. We've done, the day before the budget gets passed by the town, I think the first year that was, I think it was the day or two days before we met, and they cut money out of our budget and at the same time moved CIP around to give us more in CIP to make up that difference. So we moved technology out, we moved a bus out, and it got funded that way. So they can do anything they want at any time, just like with our operating budget. We recommend what we want, they can do whatever they want, and we have to deal with it afterwards.
I understand that. I mean, I, my question is only, I guess, already we have those maintenance items that are not being recommended, and then what if they don't fund the other things? So that's...
There was some discussion last night, I think it was like $175,000 that's earmarked per se for snow removal, or a piece of equipment for snow removal. And we kind of went back and forth, and some of us were leaning towards, hey, we don't need it, we could, you know, maybe put some of that money. And then some of the other committee members were like, well, no, we have to wait out the season and things could change, and da-da-da. So again, a lot of moving parts, and it didn't, we didn't, we didn't, there wasn't enough support.
I think the major takeaway, at least from my point of view, is that we should have that money somewhere.
Somewhere.
And that, like, we obviously want it at the end of the day, but if it's not somewhere before the end of the day, it's not, it's definitely not going to be there at the end of the day. So I think it's important that we show how important the maintenance hole is, that we need to fund it one way or another. We put it in here now, obviously, if they don't want our number to be over 3% or whatever, that can, that can go into the negotiations over what our final budget looks like and what sources the money comes from. But, you know, our maintenance is, it's very important, we don't want our schools to go the way of other town buildings that need full replacement when we're not doing the maintenance that's necessary. Already in our operating budget, we were only funding half of priority one maintenance.
And I didn't realize, though I asked you, I thought you said the money in the CIP that we were asking for, that was the money for the, for the half of this priority one? It's the second half of it?
No, no, no. I was counting on...
Okay.
I was counting on the 350 as part of just the maintenance, and that wasn't even covering half of your priority one. So without that, you're covering $350,000 less than that now.
So we're not even covering half of the priority one?
No, I don't even think you were before.
I thought we were covering half.
You were about half. So you were covering about half of the priority one. Because remember, everything, as they get older and things keep on getting on the list, they keep moving up on the priority list. There's nothing left on priority three. Everything's moved up.
To one and two. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And so you weren't even covering half.
Oh, right here, yeah. It says right on our budget sheet, half of priority one maintenance items.
But that was counting, if you remember my, my notes that I had on the bottom, I forget what sheet it was, where it says that, that is counting on, that $350,000, counting on the 644, counting on all of those things I was counting on as part of the budget. The maintenance is the one that's most serious, and I said that at the time, it's not a good idea, because short memories will occur and people won't remember, which is exactly, I think, partially what happened.
I would just say, if you look in your maintenance tab, which is a purple one, and you look at what we actually spent this past fiscal year on repairs for maintenance, was $2 million, which we relied almost, I think we must use almost our whole or the whole health benefit credit to do the maintenance that we needed to do, because we certainly were not funded at that level at the beginning. This year, we're requesting $870,000, that's requested in repairs, which is 60%, or is that math right? 40% of, 43% of what we actually spent this past year. So to think that we're going to do the proper maintenance with that amount, especially now that we're not, and last year, we used the $300,000 in CIP on top of that for maintenance work. So to think we're going to get by with 870, it doesn't, it just doesn't, the math doesn't work.
And even if we got funded with the 350 more, I mean, I have in my notes from when you spoke that night, you know, we talked about health benefits money for maintenance. I mean, it's, we might be at the point, you know, we have a lot of needs.
We've been relying on health benefits money for several years now to fund our buses and maintenance. And that's where people think you're the sleight-of-hand thing, where it isn't. You're actually relying on the health of your employees to fund the things in your operating budget. No sleight-of-hand, it's just, it's the reality, you have to have these things, and they're not in your operating budget, they have to come from somewhere. If your employees aren't healthy, it means you don't get those things, and therefore you're, now you're really in trouble.
What are, what are board member thoughts about adding the maintenance money to our budget? Ask, our operating budget ask. Emily?
I agree with what you said before, that it's, we need it, and if we don't put things in the budget that we really need and that we think are important, then town council will, they won't know. So I think we have to put it in there and then see what happens.
Cindy?
I agree with Emily. I think we're, we'll be irresponsible if we don't put in for things we know we need, and then we're going to be drowning, and then we're going to be, you know, trying to figure out things later. But I do agree that we need to put in for that.
Sharon?
So what will that make our percentage?
So it looks like if, so, here, let me, yeah, let me give you this little update, just to help us. So Wednesday, February 15th, the board of ed adopted the budget from the superintendent for $71,936,000 or 2.49%, right? On Wednesday, we also adjusted the 2017-18 proposed budget by the addition of the $90,605 for the STEM teacher, bringing our ask to 2.62%. Okay? So then, if we were to tonight, add back maintenance to the operating budget at a $350,000 amount, that would bring our ask up to 3.12%.
So 3.1?
12.
Which is still only half of what we need or less for maintenance?
For maintenance, it would get us to about... Yeah, we do what we can with that. I mean, you know, again, we may need to supplement with health benefits money, we may need to, I don't know.
If you just, if you look in our, the priority one is what was originally requested by the program, was just over $2 million. So adding 350 back into our budget...
Brings us to...
Which brings us to 1.2 million, which is 60% of the priority one ask.
Right. And I think one of the things that you're going to come up against is, because it was brought up last night, is you can use, because it's listed as roof replacement, there's very specific categories. The reality is, is general maintenance. And so the purpose of the public school CIP and the reason the council several years ago increased it to the 1.2 million cap, and we've been trying to accumulate money in there, so that when the bonding issue did happen with town hall, we were going to be able to start picking up some, some of our own capital, because there's not going to be any money left in pay-as-you-go. And the needs are still going to be there. So we were hoping to kind of hold on to that. So instead of spending it right now on all of those things, when the bonding hits, then you're not going to have it in either place. So that was, that was for, to try to take on some of those capital projects to keep going when the debt service hit. You understand what I mean? You understand what I mean?
Are you, and now that's the money that we're planning on using?
Well, one of the things they brought up was, uh, well, you, you can, you can use the roof, you can use your public school CIP, well, yeah, sure, we can.
Okay.
So are we slated, okay, go back to the public school CIP. There, there were some projects on the list last night, and it looked like it was, I, I don't wanna use the word earmarked.
Yeah, we've eight, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I think, uh, earmarked.
How much?
Eight-eighty.
Eight-hundred and eighty?
Yep.
So the recommendation from the town manager was use that money? That's why we don't need to put it in the CIP?
So you have about a hundred thousand left?
Well, what happened is like any other project, we have to go through the formal, uh, steps of, uh, adding for a new project to be
To use that money, from that?
Unless there's already a project, uh, description that fits what you're trying to do. We have about fifteen open projects that are in the, uh, board CIP account. So depending on what we need to do and want to do, we could just transfer the money around, um, without any town council asking if it's existing project to existing project. If it's a new project, we have to have the town council add that project to the CIP, so it's available for us to transfer money into.
And as Bill just said, these are basically general maintenance items, not necessarily what they're slated for on that.
Right, now, to give you an example of some of the things we've been using that account for, i- ironically, bathrooms, um, across the district. So all of the bathrooms at Patterson are, have been refurbished, we're working on Kellogg, um, the, we were scheduled to do another bathroom at Kellogg, we, we had to use that money for rentals now, to put paint and stuff, uh, down there. But that's what we, we do. Every summer, we'll do a couple bathrooms, we, you know, we keep plugging away at the things on the list. And that's what that money is for, so that we don't have to ask the council for it. Bigger projects is, we can't do that, you know, there's no way, especially bonding projects, we were not allowed to bond.
Okay, so, um, Paul and Bob, do you, did you want to weigh in, or how, how are you feeling? No, you're good?
Good.
Okay, um, we do have a motion available, we could, somebody wants to make a motion, we can adjust our budget by the amount that is needed for maintenance. Somebody wanna read the recommended motion? Oh, you know what? Lou, would you be able to give us the
Account number?
We need the account number.
For the maintenance?
Yes.
That'd be two-six-one-zero is the maintenance program.
And Cindy, I believe the amount is three hundred and fifty thousand for maintenance.
Move the, move the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Board of Education budget to be adjusted by addition of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in account twenty-six-ten for maintenance.
Can I have a second? Seconded by Emily. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. What do we got, seven? Seven of us tonight?
Yeah.
Seven, we're missing Jane and Steve. Okay. Um, does the board have any other ideas, uh, adjustments, additions or subtractions to the budget before we talk about, um, making a motion to transmit the budget over to the town council? Emily?
I cannot stop thinking about the social workers at the middle school and how important that is. I, eh, I mean, it's hard, because I don't wanna ask to put more money into our budget, um, because I wanna be financially responsible to the town, but I also wanna be responsible to the students
Children.
And all of their families and the people that would be, those resources would be available to, and how I know they really, really need them. So I would love to put social workers in the middle school.
What would, um, do we know what we're talking about? Would we have that listed here? Yeah. About a hundred and forty thousand for two, right? Yes. Uh, Mr. Stam?
So, given the, the fact that we have a really tough financial situation going on all over, would it be better for us to just start with one? And, and do what we can with one for, for the first year, and then maybe plan to add another one?
So that would be one would, would share both middle schools, is that how?
You know, I, I understand, yeah, I mean, I'm just, it's just an idea. I know we have two middle schools, so we, hence we need one at one and one at the other. Um, we have none now, we've had none for many years. We all know that, that was a big concern of mine last year, too. So do we, you know, do we try for one and, and split that person, and that, knowing that that's a very difficult task to do?
Josh?
Uh, I'm, I'm just gonna say as a blank and I'm not go, I, I won't be supporting any further additions into our budget this year. I think one thing that we should do on the curriculum committee, cough, Paul, cough, is, um, is look at the, the needs and the programs that are in place at the middle schools, because I, I know we've talked about it at budget time since I've been on the board for middle school social workers, but I don't remember ever doing any further investigation and learning more about the systems we have, because obviously we're dealing with some of those concerns in different ways. Seeing what the actual identified needs are, how the program would run, what staffing would look like, where, how much
Yeah, I, I agree.
Is what we're needing, so I think it's something that
For instance
I think it's something we should do more investigation on to, to be able to make a better case to the town that this is a need, a, a big financial need. Um, and then next year, at budget time, if we do our work now and, and in the fall, then that would be something that we would potentially make more of a, more of a priority as, as it probably should be, um, going forward. So that's, that's where I stand on it.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, no, I, I just agree with Josh.
I think that's a, a great idea, and that you make a good case. I'm thinking about the world language and how much discussion went into that before we made that proposal. Um, and we know it's a need, but I think understanding how much of a need and really getting our arms wrapped around it makes a lot of sense. So I think that's great. So we'll, we'll give that to the curriculum committee to look into.
I would be very happy if we were to get the ball rolling.
And that sounds like that would be a good first step.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Emily, that's a great suggestion. Anybody else? Any other additions or subtractions before we? How is everybody feeling about transmitting over to the town council this evening? See some nods, everybody's in agreement? Yep, at this point? All right, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
We need the, we need the dollar figures.
Oh, yes, Lou.
Your budget right now is at seventy-two million three seventy-six six zero five, three point one-two seventy.
Say again, Lou?
Seventy-two, three-seven-six, six-zero-five?
Right.
For a three point one-two percent increase? All right, all right, so now can we have a motion? Emily?
Move the Board of Education, transmit the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget to the town manager in the amount of seventy-two million three hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and five dollars?
Yes.
Okay? Which represents an increase of three point one-two percent.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Josh. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, um, Dr. Collins, will the updated budget at a glance be put, wanna?
This one will not, um,
Okay.
Uh, yeah, but yes, it will.
Yes, I, okay.
Uh, this is a special one I made for you
Yes.
With different scenarios, but yes, this one
Yes, you'll, you'll revise it and put it out there, okay, that would be terrific.
I already have it done.
Okay, okay, awesome. I'm gonna move to agenda item D, which is public participation in any matter related to board responsibilities. Reminder, the phone number is eight-six-zero-six-six-five-eight-seven-three-six. Okay, uh, seeing nobody in the public coming forward and nobody calling in on the phone, we're gonna move to agenda item E, remarks by board members. We could start on this side of the table. Josh? All set? Cindy?
Um, I just wanted to say that I'm really comfortable with the budget that we're proposing and that we're bringing forward. I do appreciate the fact that we were really trying to be fiscally responsible, and I think the, the two allocations that we, or the two, um, motions that we, as a board, decided on, I think are responsible, and, um, I'm just hoping that we'll get this board for that. Thank you.
Emily?
There we go. All right, thanks again, um, to Lou and Pam for answering our questions and the lovely flow chart. I appreciate the visual representation of it, that helped me tremendously, so thank you for all of that, and, uh, everyone else that put their hard work into answering all of our questions. Um, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Mom?
I'd like to also thank, uh, the group for their support in explaining, uh, the budget and its cuts in our needs.